Hello, everybody. Mics are on. Looks like all the aldermen are here and alderwomen are here. My name is Tom Simonian. I'm the alderman of the 5th Ward. I walk the streets of the 5th Ward with my senior alderman, Alderman Maladra, who has taught me...
This is gonna be a joke, right?
Well, oh, I do have a joke. I start, uh, I start all my meetings with a joke. I thought I'd start a trend and only Mr. Bruno followed up, which I wanted to thank him, but it was such a sophisticated joke, I didn't get it. And, uh, and he, uh, so, uh, my jokes are pretty easy. Uh, there's a politician and the Pope at the pearly gates in, um, in heaven, and greeted there by Saint Peter. So Saint Peter says, "Our next step is, gentlemen, is we are gonna get you housing while you spend eternity here." So they got in the car and they stopped at where the Pope was gonna be spending the rest of eternity. And it was about a 500 square foot rickety old shack with no electricity and no bathrooms, and it just was in horrible shape. And he says, "Your Pontiff, this is your home." So Pope gets out of the car and heads to his home. They drive a couple more miles and, uh, they come up to a gated mansion, 2,000-foot driveway, and they pull up butlers, servants, maids, 58 rooms, 35 bathrooms. And Saint Peter says, "Mr. Politician, this is where you'll be spending eternity." Politician says, "I don't get it. Pope is sitting, staying in that rickety old shack and I've got this huge mansion? Explain it to me, Saint Peter." Saint Peter says, "Well, we've got about 20 Popes up here. We've only, you're our first politician. We wanna make sure we take care of you." Anyway, with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Any changes to the agenda? I have one. I wanna add letter H. Let me read it for you. We wanna add that, uh, a cash contribution to the school district in the amount of $20,049.27 and a cash contribution to the park district in the amount of $88,692.70 reflecting a credit for existing residential units on the property related to the Park Place Oak Creek Capital Partners project. Do we need a motion to add that?
Is it a need to remotion? Is that...
Or we just add it?
Second.
Can we just add it? Okay, it's added. We don't need it.
It's already contained within item G already, though, isn't it?
Uh, the issue is, is that this requires a majority vote.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds vote, and so I think it's best that we separate it now, vote on it separately, 'cause it'll have to be voted on separately at the city council meeting. So, would you like to add that?
I move to accept the modified agenda.
Second.
Okay, accepted by Alderman Brown, seconded by Alderman Flanagan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We need to approve the minutes from the January 26, 2015 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Singer, seconded by Alderman Marx. Any questions? The dea's, the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to items of business. A, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of Ford Transit Connect vehicle from Zimmerman Ford in the amount of $21,284. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Alderman Sino.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Any questions, the dea's, the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, recommend draft resolution declaring surplus property of 2004 Ford Ranger vehicle. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Marx, seconds. Any questions? Audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award and contract to HD Supply in the amount of $36,946.77 for the 2015 overhead cable replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Cummings, move, and Alderman Marx, second. Any questions? Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question. Is the materials for this project, just for this project, or is it for all the projects that were listed in the report? And I can't think of where the report was. The status report, the quarterly status report? There was a whole bunch of projects that were listed there, and I just, I didn't know if it was for all of those projects for the 2015...
No, it's not for all of the 2015 projects. It's just for the overhead part of those projects and for the three separate...
Oh.
...overhead replacement.
So there'll be more coming down the way? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Well, if I may...
Sure. Alderman Singer?
Hal, have we dealt with this profit for these people previously?
No, this is a new contractor to the city of Geneva. They're out of Missouri. There's a lot of work in the area right now, and all of the contractors in the area are busy and actually didn't bid on this work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Hal? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Recommend acceptance, uh, letter, no, letter D, recommend acceptance of fiscal year 2014, 2015, third quarter, third quarter goals, status report.
So moved.
Alderman Marx, second by Alderman Sino. Any questions? Audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? E, consider amending the city's downtown station area master plan to change the future land use designation proportion of the subject realty from single-family residential to single-family residential attached draft ordinance related to Oak Creek Capital Partners.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes a motion. Alderman Cummings, seconds. Any questions? David, do you wanna...
The next few items on the agenda are all related to the same project, the Park Place Development, proposed for block two of the original town. This was considered, committee, the whole meeting on the 26th of January, so I just wanna give a brief, brief overview and then an update of what's changed since that meeting. The applicant is proposing to redevelop block two in the original town for 30 new town home units. The proposal includes demolition of seven existing residential buildings on the block. He's proposing to construct two four-unit buildings, two five-unit buildings, and two six-unit buildings, all facing public streets with rear-low garages. The applicant has requested zoning deviations, including reduced minimum street yard setback, increased maximum lot coverage, and increased maximum building height. The applicant's also requested a reduced amount for the required cash contributions to the park district and school district. Those proposed contributions reflect a credit for the existing residential units on the At the meeting on the 26th, there was concern raised, really with all of those requested zoning deviations and the proposed reduction to the, to the land cash contribution. Since then, the applicant revised the plans to reduce the building height from 38 feet and 10 inches to 38 feet and 2 inches, to relocate the access on Stevens Street to North Street, and to increase the setback for building four, and that's the building at the southwest corner of the site, Second and Stevens, to increase that setback from 10 feet to 17 feet. The applicant is present, and he would like to go through those changes with you and share those plans with you in just a moment. Just again, this project comes to you with a unanimous recommendation from the plan commission for approval, with the exception of the reduction in the land cash contribution. There was one member that was opposed to applying that credit. So with that, if there's, if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to do so. If not, I'd turn it over to the applicant to walk through the changes to the plans.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one question about the building height. Uh, the building on Stevens Street, Stevens, is actually sloped across the front of that four-unit, four-unit building on Stevens. At what point do you measure the, and the highest point of the building is not in the middle, it's at various points in the building. And how do you measure it from, since you have a sloped street?
We measure to the, to the peak from, from the adjacent grade to the building, so it would be the highest point, the highest measurement.
Does that mean the building will have a difference in height from one end to the other, or...
John, if you could probably speak to that.
It will. So the building will slope approximately the same way the street slopes? It's not a lot, it's like one foot probably over the length of that building.
The grading plans right now show the building...
Microphone.
...foundation stepped in.
You gotta come back.
You steps up to the microphone.
Sorry, I forgot. My fault, I should've...
We're talking about building three, and right now, the grading plans show a one-foot step in the top of foundation between the two middle units.
Okay, so the building steps the same way the street does?
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
You wanna finish?
Aye.
Any other questions?
I think I had one more question for the developer while I have him up here, if that's all right with the chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
I drove by tonight and noticed there's a for-sale sign on the old greenhouse property.
Uh, that's been there for a number of months. That was there before we ever...
Is that your phone number I see on the sign?
No, that sign's been there since before we contracted for the property. That's the broker that...
You can speak for the property today.
Yes, and actually, the owner of the greenhouse property, Mr. Schombach, is here. We have that under contract. That's the only parcel out of the whole assemblage that we have not closed on.
All right, thank you, sir.
Alderman Cummings?
Could you describe again how you measure the highest point of the building?
You wanna make sure this is...
Either one, or if your answers are different, both.
Since, since this property is in residential area two, it's not, our tear-down infill regulations don't apply, so it's simply taking the building height from the adjacent grade of the building to the, to the highest point of the building.
Okay.
To the peak.
And I have a follow-up. Is the highest point of the building, the front, the fascia part of the building, or is the highest point somewhere behind that?
It's, in this...
Because it has a peaked roof?
In this case, it's behind that, 'cause it's the peak of the roof.
Okay. So what is the height when I'm out on the sidewalk and I look up?
Uh, the gables, the, hold on, let me, David, how do I...
I hit the arrow button, does it scroll down, or...
Where do, where, oh, okay. That's kind of the bird's-eye view. The peaks along the front elevation vary in height from 34 feet 4 inches to 34 feet 11 inches, all within the 35-foot guideline that you have now. Some of the examples we talked about, that when I met with you, I showed one that had a retaining wall at the sidewalk, and in that building, I found it's actually 38 feet 5 inches, but it's even higher from relation to the sidewalk, 'cause you had that two-and-a-half, three-foot retaining wall. Perfect example is this picture of this historic home, you know? But the top of the copula is really the highest point, but the way your definition is, you would measure it at the front building line and not pay attention to that extra four-foot sidewalk or retaining wall. Well, for me, what the height feels, what it is when you're walking on the sidewalk or the curb, driving on it, not following the definition. So we're kinda caught in the definition of that. But our highest point is 20 foot back from the front elevation. On the right edge of that building, I don't know if I can get with the mouse to point, this peak here in relation to the side plane of the building is 14 foot back. So you hit that peak 20 foot back and 14 foot off the side of the building. Now, there is, we, we did a perspective if you're closer to the building. So this is if you're in the westbound driving lane of the four-unit building on Stevens. You know, so you can see that back of the peak, you don't see it if you're in a car. If you are on the sidewalk, you don't see it again. You see those peaks that are in the front plane, and those are, like I said, 34 feet 4 inches to 34 feet 11 inches. So they're below the 35-foot minimum. Now, to get even less, obviously, we could do what some of the other programs do, put a retaining wall or build up grade and bring it to the building. What that does, it eliminates the porch element of the front elevation, and I don't think anybody wants us to eliminate that. That kinda helps tie it into the historic district, and I think it's a high-quality elevation element. This elevation here really does show all the movement in that front elevation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? First of all, does anyone have any other questions for David?
I do have one for David.
For David?
David, I know, I, I didn't give you a heads-up on this one, so I apologize, but you know, the Grand Reserve in Randall Square, I know what that, they asked for a variance on the height. Do you know, that is above 35 feet, isn't it not there?
It is. I know there was relief built into that planned unit development to go above 35 feet. I don't know the exact height, but I wanna say it's around 44 feet off the top of my head, but it can't be positive.
All right, thank you, just for a point of reference.
Any other questions for David? Does the audience have any questions for Mr. DeGroot? Okay. Now...
You're on.
Please name...
John Luzinski, Oak Creek Capital Partners. After the last meeting, we, you know, looked at a couple things. I'm gonna go back to the site plan first, if I can figure which direction of...
Forward.
Yep. Alderman Brown asked early on in the last meeting, would it be possible to take both access points to the north, to North Street? Which is something we were willing to agree to at that moment in time, because it seemed reasonable. The question was asked, really, what did the fire department think about that? My understanding is they are, well, they view it not as ideal, but as an acceptable solution. We did also do a auto-turn analysis for the turn movements for fire trucks, garbage trucks, and that doesn't work. So this site plan depicts both accesses going to North Street, which seem to be the consensus wishes of a majority of the council. The thing I failed to discuss last time, and maybe 'cause sometimes I just assume people are thinking the same way I think, we have, and the site plan depicts our, what we believe is gonna be our actual sales mix, between A units, B units, and C units. The units, as you know from looking at the book, vary in width from 21 to 24-foot in width. But being generally a conservative guy, what we show is the movements on the front elevation and the rear elevation to match the actual mix. But we showed the width to be the widest. So on the picture I showed you two weeks ago, every unit, if you were to measure the width, the building was based on all 24-foot wide units. All right? Now, if we just drew them to what the actual mix is, and we can tell by the front, I actually, our amount of impervious, or amount of pervious goes down by another 2%. We're just showing more building here than would actually happen. What this plan does is we said, okay, that marketing flexibility that I always try to build in, 'cause you know, salespeople always like total flexibility, that building four, the one at Second and Stevens, we actually drew that to show, had it redrawn, to show the actual width. So what happens there is the setback off the sidewalk to the side of the building used to be 10 feet, it's now 17 feet.
Could you show with a mouse what corner of the diagram you're talking about, please?
I'm showing right here, this building here, compared to this, they're both the same number of units building, one, two, three, four, five, six-unit building. This shows it as a 10-foot setback, and all these units are shown as 24 feet, which everything on this plan is. We said, all right, we can limit our flexibility here and drew it as the actual building width. And what happens is it pulls back seven foot. So if the actual per buyers buying the mix we think, you're gonna see this come back seven feet, all right, this'll come back six and a half foot, 'cause it's a five-unit building, this would come back six and a half foot, this would come back seven foot, and these two four-unit buildings would get narrower by six feet. Now, quite frankly, I would prefer not to limit our marketing flexibility to that degree at this moment. I would be willing to and happy to do that on building four, as well as, say, if any of those buildings actually become smaller, in this case, we would hold the inside line for those two buildings. So you would see the extra space come in the outside of the buildings on those four buildings. The other two, I guess it doesn't really matter. Now, another question came up today, that quite frankly is another one I don't think any of us thought about, but in the water main project, the extension of that water main up Route 31, roughly 80, 85-foot of the sidewalk on Stevens Street is gonna get pulled out and have to get replaced. Question came was, what if we replaced it instead of having the big 20-foot parkway to something smaller? You know, move the sidewalk closer to the curb. Something we can do, and actually, we can do for the whole length. The one caveat I have is there is a very old Nykor line out there, and I don't know exactly where it is. But I would suspect we could move that sidewalk on Stevens to reduce the width of that parkway from the 20-foot to the near edge of sidewalk, three to five feet, and not adversely affect anything else out there. So, you know, if that's something you want us to consider, we would be happy to consider that also.
He's gonna move the sidewalk to nowhere.
This is the cover sheet of a four-page, you know, which shows the bird's-eye view, so you can kinda see where the different points are on the roof of the buildings. Points A, B, and C are those peaks of the gables at the front building elevation, and those are, like I said, are 34'4 to 34'11 inches. And it's on this picture, I just tried to make it clean for you. Point D is that peak that here, it's 38 feet two, and it is 14 foot back from the front elevation and 14 feet in from the side elevation. So it's back, if you're on the sidewalk, you cannot see that point. Item D, that was D. E and F are the different ridges. For three of the five units in this building, it's at 36'6, and just how the different buildings go together, you will see we have in this section for two buildings, it jumps back up to the 38'2 inches. So we're at 38'2 inches is our max height, and we're able to, uh, we're not playing the game by putting a front retaining wall along these buildings or anything like that. I think that shows you, you know, the other townhomes in town do play with that grade a little. While it fits your definition in your building code, it does not change the actual feeling if you're on the sidewalk or if I knew, if you're on the curb in front of the building. The one example that I shared with most of you when I met with you of a building that was improved recently here in town, had that retaining wall in front of it, without measuring the extra plus or minus three feet of the retaining wall, that building is 38 feet 5 inches, and then you got another two-and-a-half to three-foot of retaining wall at the back of the sidewalk. So from the sidewalk, it'll actually feel like plus or minus 41 feet, so, or some three feet higher than we are. Yeah, that's all that is for you. Lot coverage, as I mentioned last time, we're using all our alleyway, hold on, it's not, I gotta go the other direction. Shade, the darker shaded gray there are alleyway driveways. That is all permeable concrete pavers. We've selected a unilock product for that, and per the first sentence of your definition, that is totally pervious, and if you read the definition like I do, we're, our, our pervious area is below 48% on site. But your second sentence in your definition says, "But parkway, or but alleyways or driveways made with stone should be considered impervious." Well, clearly, this is pervious. That is why we ask for the relief, because we didn't want anybody to question it down the road on the definition. But we're clearly, in terms of impervious area, under 50%. If those buildings did shrink to match the intent, what we think is gonna be this actual sales mix, there's another 2% change in the amount of green space. Now, the one thing that came up at the meeting that we did not do, because I can honestly say in 30 years in this business, I have never heard a plan commission or city council say, "Take parking away." It was mentioned about that gross impervious area, should we consider removing some of the extra guest parking spaces we have around this landscape area where we have 12, three on each side? We have left those in place, because quite frankly, it seems like having more parking's not necessarily a bad thing. With that, we have, do math, 40, 40, 30 times, 132 spaces on site. So if my math in my head's correct, we're approximately 4.8 parking spots per unit. Now, the one other question that's come up as I've talked to people during the last week was the question, could we reduce the size of the units, increase density to increase The only way to truly do that is, one, I, you know, and I may be wrong, but again, I've been in business 30 years, I don't think we wanna try to have one-car garage units. So we're really controlled by, you know, you need 21, 20-foot width. So if we made all these 21-foot units, we're really not gonna increase the density, we're just gonna have smaller units. So there's not gonna be any corresponding savings, there's just not enough room to pick up units. To do that, you have to go more vertical, you'd have to go to almost a condo building. And quite frankly, plus you have already in downtown, walk to the center of town, approximately 120, 125 condo units that fulfill a purpose. You know, I don't wanna compete head-on-head with that product, I wanna complement it. There's enough people that wanna live, walk to town for both product types, and quite frankly, that fits small, a small unit size, as well as a lower price point size, but also fits a different demographic. size, but also fits a different demographic. For the people that truly want one-story living, more than likely, they're locking the doors somewhere in October and coming back somewhere in April, May. I can't wait to get to that point in my life, but, so based on that, you know, I just want to say, we did look at it because we were asked to, but we were not comfortable reducing the size, just to reduce the size. Now, if the market, because one of our units is 21-foot, and if they all want to buy the same unit, I'll be happy to sell them, we'll have to just make sure we mask the building correctly, but we'll sell whatever the market wants to buy. Based on the calls we've gotten, my wife was here today, was at the health club this morning, and someone came to her and said, oh, we understand you're going to build some townhomes in Geneva, where do we sign up and can we put a reservation down? And we're like, not yet. One, we don't have a project approved, and two, we don't have our final pricing out. But we've had that kind of response from more than 15 people since the public hearing process has started. We're very comfortable with the process and the timing on the project. And like I said, I believe I shared with everyone, we are projecting an 18-month buildout, but we have also planned for, in the worst case, you know, is it a 30-month buildout? We're planning for that eventuality one way or the other, but based on the response we're getting, we think 18 months may be conservative. With that.
Alderman Marx.
So I just wanted to clarify, on that building number four.
Yes.
You're willing to say that's is, that is going to be the maximum length of it?
Yes.
That you're going to keep it to that?
Yes.
And you'll fit the units in the way you want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's.
That's pretty much the way it has to be.
That's right. That building right now is what we think it's going to be.
Okay.
That just took out the conservatism in the rest of the buildings. To take that another step further, the building to the north or the two on First Street, you know, I'd say if they become shorter, we will hold the inside.
Yeah.
Line, so any additional or shorting of the building would appear in the three corners.
Okay.
You know, that was always our intent. Sometimes I just assume people are reading my mind, but I gotta learn sometimes to explain that a little better.
So if you can move that sidewalk along Stevens Street, you're saying anywhere from three to five, what is the closest, that building number three is right now? What is that at right now?
We're at, to the front edge is 10 feet.
It's 10, okay.
Right. So say you move it three, you'd be 13, you'd be 13 to 25 feet.
Okay.
From the near edge of the sidewalk. If you measured from the curb to the near edge of the building, it is 20 plus six plus ten, it's 36 feet.
Okay.
Which, one of the homes we talked about, half a block down, the side of the house is 20 feet from the curb.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Senior.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Which of the buildings do you expect to begin developing first?
Let me go. I will preface this by saying, I gotta rethink our model a little bit, but up until we change the site plan with both accesses to the north, our intent was to build Building Three first, which is the one on Stevens, that was going to be our model building. Let me see, you don't have a wireless model. So we are going to model here, then we're going to build this building and this building, partly because our open space and our visual amenity, we want people, as they come down Route 31, to be able to see it, not only the model building, but the landscape improvements here, and same thing this direction. And then we were going to go Buildings Two, One, and Six. Now, I haven't fully rethought that through with the change of the accesses both to North Street. We may need to rethink it and move it, and if that's the case, we may move the model up over to this building here. But I haven't fully thought that through yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first, the good, I've looked at a lot of blueprints in my, in my years and elevations and plans, and typically, within historic preservation, we're looking for a lot of movement, a lot of relief on the facade. Often, it's difficult to get a builder to give a foot of setback on various portions. So you've, I think in my experience, in terms of trying to give that relief and depth for the facade, I think you've, you've done more than any, any I've seen. So that's good. There's, there's issues, you know, obviously, there's concern with, with height relief abutting the historic district. I think from the street, I think, you know, the, the plan commission and, and your design have done what they could in terms of masking that relief. But I am concerned with that, you know, that being an entry corridor into the city. If you're on Stevens Street, I think all in all, the massing would be pretty acceptable, but as you're driving from State Street or down from St. Charles, you will see the full height of that, and it'll, I think it'll, it'll pop. But that's, you know, that's not my greatest concern. You know, I looked at it, I've been asking around, you know, who wants these units? And, you know, you're obviously getting one response, I'm getting another. Everyone that I've asked is looking for something like 1,700 square feet at the, at the top end. So when I look back to, and I realize, I think the, the townhome premise is, is kind of limited. You can't really get much smaller in a townhome footprint because you want a two-car garage, that's a reasonable expectation. So your, you know, your smaller units are basically as small as they can, as small as they can go. I am, I am so in favor of, of density here. I think it just hits a home run with the plan and concept, having density and rooftops in this location. But I'm, I'm not sure that this really speaks to our shifting demographics in 10 years. You know, I think you've done everything you, you can. I'm, at this point, I'm, you know, short of additional conversation, I'm leaning toward a nay on this specific product, but I'm, I'm all, I'm very supportive of you doing a project here.
Would it make you, now I don't have a design. Would it make you feel comfortable if we had our architect design a 17 under square foot unit that would be 21-foot wide, so it'd be like one of our other ones, so we'd probably have to shorten it up? The market will decide. You know, we've talked to enough people, we don't think that's it, but hey, I'll design it and price it out, and if a buyer wants to buy it, we'll sell it.
I'll be perfectly, I am not going to presume that I know more about market research on, on these products than you. So don't, don't take that as any kind of, you know, judgment.
Yes. We want the property to be successful, and you know, we'd be willing to show a smaller unit if we could, sell it, we'll sell it, but.
Yeah, I think when, when you get that small in, in this vertical type structure, it seems that you're, you're then taking up space with, with stairs. And I didn't notice, you, you don't have any closets aligned for any potential elevator in this design?
Oh, that's because we, those were the initial sketches. We haven't cut the architect loose on the final plans. The intent was, in the 24-foot wide unit, to offer elevator option. The A unit, as you see, we have a main level master bedroom, so you didn't need that. And then the C unit, I think the C unit is, is the 21-foot unit, it's just not big enough to accommodate it. And that'll be our, you know, low price, or price leader, I shouldn't say low price, at 300 and $9,000.
Well, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's a tough call, there's no question. There's, you know, we, we look at, you know, you know, we give a lot of deference to our downtown, because, I mean, you want to be where you want to be because it's Geneva's downtown.
Right, yeah.
So we, you know, we have to make sure we look at it in its totality. Thank you.
And that's, you know, I will say, as a unit size, going from 64 to the train station here in Geneva, all the townhomes are at least 1,950 square feet, topping out at 3,100 square feet. We're kind of.
Well, that's, there's a lot of interesting information in here in terms of where those, where the demand will probably be.
Probably be, no problem.
Thank you.
You, any other comments? Alderman Lauder.
So when I think about this, I think less about the specific units. You're the real estate mogul, I'm a lowly IT guy at a bank, so I don't know a lot about what's going to sell and what's not going to sell. But I've been working in Geneva for a long time, I have a pretty good idea of what I call vision, and, and what I think that vision can accommodate. Everybody on the city council and some people in the audience have heard my, my rant about scale. I, I think Geneva's kind of a unique place, and part of what makes us unique is that people, when they get out of their car, they feel comfortable. We're not too big, we're not too small, we're, we're like in that just right area, it's hard to quantify that. So as we, as we move forward and as we face the changing demand for housing stock, my concern and what I'm going to watch is, is the mass of the developments and whether or not they, they're appropriate to our scale. This is big, there's, there's no denying that, but, but I think that, in my mind at least, what mitigates it is the specific location. Don't really have neighbors to the north, you have Wheeler Park. If you have neighbors to the west, they're not talking, they're not saying anything. Almost everybody here has already acknowledged this type of property on the Route 31 side of, of this block, so there's no question being asked there about whether or not this is the right location on that half of the property. So it really sort of all boils down to how things look on, on Stevens Street. And we've, we've moved the entrance points to mitigate the light problem. We're listening to everything you were talking about today, we're being very careful about, about setbacks in height, not just from a, a pure foot perspective, but from how it feels on the sidewalk in the street. So, you know, after, after everything that I've read, everything I've been looking at, I grew with Mike when he, when he shows the homes for a changing region, I have my concerns about the size of the building and the, and the target audience that you're going to get, but that's your risk. Our risk is, do we have a nice property in Geneva that fits the scale? And I think in this location, the answer is yes, I think this is going to work. So I don't know if we're supposed, because we're taking this in three pieces or four chunks, I don't know that it makes sense like, like to, if you can build your property or build this if we deny one of them, so I'm just sort of talking about it all at once, and, and in general, I'm supportive.
Well, I think, I think we best just discuss, I mean, discussing the whole thing instead of individually, and I guess we vote on it individually, but discussion can be, I think, open-ended for all three issues.
I'm done though.
Okay. Alderman Cummings.
I guess I'd, maybe surprisingly enough, like to agree with Alderman Lauder. You know, the more, the more I thought about it, I, I like the, what you call motion, is that the?
Movement.
Verbi, movement, movement. I'm obviously not an architect, especially as opposed to a more flat front. I appreciate the fact that on the farthest west building, that you have now more setback, I think that softens it from the block that is southwest of that southwest corner of the unit. I like the fact that the highest point that I see as I'm walking down the sidewalk right there are extremely similar to the other buildings that I see in Geneva, the Muse Homes that, that actually I'm looking at, and, and then the ones across the street from there. I like that. I, I like the idea of entry-exit on the north side, I think that saves a lot on the south, a lot of traffic. I like the idea of pulling the sidewalk closer to the street. First, I thought you were talking about Route 31, I thought, oh my gosh, don't.
No, no, there's not enough room there.
Closer to Route 31, I run along there, I'm scared enough as it is. But on Stevens, I think that, I don't think it would be alarming to the pedestrians, but I think visually, I think it would add to that south face of the, of the development. And I, and I like those, I like those changes, and, and how things were fleshed out, so I am.
Thank you.
In favor of this, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
I, you'd mentioned a report from the fire department on those, on regarding North Street, you said that, was it, you said they, they said it was not ideal? Was that what your comment was?
David, you want to answer that exactly? Not that I interpret, because I didn't talk directly.
Not ideal in the sense that they can't pull a truck straight through like they could with the previous site plan, but with the auto turn exhibit that was submitted, they confirmed that they can do the maneuvers they need to do to, to circulate the site. They were also comfortable with the change because accessing these units, they'll be accessing the front doors, which are all access from the public street, and they have access to all front doors from the public streets.
But in the report, it said it was not ideal. Were the, were the terminology?
I used the word ideal.
Okay. Do we, I'm, do.
With every project, we have an auto turn exhibit that makes sure that the fire trucks can, can maneuver through the site and.
So in other words, they got a backup to get into the, in other words, if they came off 31 and entered on North Street and then tried to make a left turn?
Yes.
They could negotiate that?
Yes.
Okay.
Move through the whole site, make every turn without ever needing a reverse gear.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais?
Oh, I've. Alderman. One more question. Regarding the interior parking spaces, and, and this is, this is probably something to do with Geneva law, after the property turns over, I would assume there's a homeowner association, after it turns over to the homeowner association, is it possible that the homeowner association says, you know, we don't need those three north parallel spots along the, the green space, nobody ever uses them, let's, let's plant grass? Does that happen, or is this sort of set in stone for the next 100 years? Do you understand what I'm asking?
There, there is a landscape plan that's included with the PUD, so it's supposed to, unless city council gives approval for changes, it should stay the same as approved by the city council. If there are minor changes, that might happen, but typically, the landscape plan that's approved is what is in place.
Okay.
Oh, certainly, yes.
We could also build that flexibility into the planned unit development. A lot of our PUDs have some flexibility built in where minor changes specified as landscaping or pavement can be approved administratively by staff without having to go back through the whole process.
All right, all right. I'm just, you know, 10 years down the road, people say, you know, like, this is built for two cars, everybody has one, we have bikes, single cars, we have too many spots, it would be nice to have more grass, fewer spots.
Conversely, we could do that in reverse, modify the landscape land, take out, say, the ones on the north and south, take out half of them, and build in the flexibility to add those in, should they need to be added in later on. You know, six to one, half dozen the other. You know, six to one, half dozen the other, whichever way you prefer. We left them in because, like I said, I've never heard somebody say, "Take out parking."
Right.
But we can do it either way.
But at that point, it's a, it's a homeowner decision and it would be nice if the homeowners had more flexibility rather than less flexibility. That's, that's all I was thinking with that.
Okay, anybody else in the dais? I'm guessing the audience wants to speak on this subject. So we'll do, I liked Mr. Kilburg's way of handling this last time, so we'll, we'll follow it the same way. When you, when you come to the podium, please state your name, your address. We may ask you to spell your name. And then if you could limit your remarks, we would appreciate it. And if you're, if someone else has made those remarks, we also would appreciate it if you don't necessarily duplicate those remarks. So we'll start over here to my left, the audience is right, and we'll start first row back and then come this way, back row for, front. So unless the press wants to say anything in the first row, we'll move on to the second row. Anybody in the second row like to speak? Sure. Again, please state your name and your address and...
I'm Dan Horvath at 115 Ford Street in Geneva. I have a question. This is a modified plan from, even since Friday. There's been six parking spots removed and more open space added that's been to the rear of the buildings. Why aren't the buildings considered to be moved back for that? Same reason that I approached it and suggested, it took me five minutes to suggest it to all of you, as a consideration. Those middle units on Stevens could be, that center rectangle could be turned north-south and those buildings could be set back. That whole building could be set back if those two southern units were just a little bit shorter. And not everything is 2,500 square feet and they're all going to make $485,000 for the developer. There's lots of, lots of things that could happen here besides this, these enormous units that are questionable to be sold with us living in the neighborhood. You guys mentioned a neighborhood that doesn't exist. What about us? What about the people who do live there? We live there. The cemetery, good, great joke, but we live there and there's a park and this is precedent and this is very little movement I see. And we just have a lot of questions. I'm sure there's going to be more, and I don't know if you have an answer, John, but this is, this is why we're here, is to engage the group, to find some common ground. There's still no excavating being done as far as I can tell. We're still at 36, 37 feet as far as I know. Our homes are 30. That, if you switch it, if you take out those six parking spots, we don't need more park for the people who don't, may not even use it because there's a park across the street and a park down the hill. And we're talking about our neighborhoods that we see each other in and we walk the streets and see each other and sit on our front porches. Move those, move that building back. Don't move the sidewalk. That's a nice parkway. It'll be nice when it's done. We keep saying that. You know, we, we, we just, you know, there's, there's plenty of stuff that could be, still be done and make it more palatable to everybody. And everyone's, everyone could be content. Whether we're all ecstatic is not a question. We're not trying to all be doing backflips. So I, I mean, I don't know if that's an, can you answer that question?
Which question?
I'll ask the first one. Why are the parking spots missing and it becomes more green space instead of there being a, what we're talking about is setbacks?
We didn't take out any parking spaces.
There was 12 spots around that on Friday.
And there's still 12 spots.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't take out a single parking spot.
They're still there. Okay. I apologize. Why is it, so why is the discussion about taking spots out and not just taking them out now and reducing it by six and moving the buildings back?
So you're saying, sorry.
Go ahead.
Building three, center building, south side of the diagram.
Yeah, take out those three spots. Push that building back to eight feet.
So push the building north and reduce the size of the green area.
So he suggests...
Take out those three spots and move that building back.
Which would be able to theoretically move this back...
Yes.
Six to eight feet.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Which goes from 10 feet to 16. Again, that's, that's, that's a compromise. Because right now, the rules are, and that's going to come up in further discussion, is there's rules here now and we're just going to erase them. And that's, that's problematic for us.
Well, just...
For me, for me. I'm not going to speak for everybody. I just got here.
Just so you know, it's just, it's not, it's not as easy as just remove spots, move it back. Now you've got issues with the fire department. Can they make that turn?
Yeah.
Can they, you know, so there's a lot more than just move a spot, slide a building back. And so I think that in the interest of this evening, you know, we, we take down these, everyone takes down these, you know, considerations and, and, you know...
It's, I don't, again, I apologize for missing the beginning of the meeting, but, you know, I think the three issues are setback, height, and density. And there's still setback, height, and density issues here. Density, I, 30 is 30. We're not talking about moving. You could, we could rearrange this, we could do lots of stuff. Make some smaller so they sell. I'm sure that'll be addressed by someone in the audience. You know, they don't all have to be half million dollar condos potentially. I'm not a, but I'm, again, there's, there's, there's things that could happen here that would make it more palatable for everybody and, and that's my main, my main point. I apologize for misinterpreting the drawing, but again, this is too tall and too close to the sidewalks. And there's been seven feet given in one building. That's what we've got so far. And I think two feet in height in a neighborhood that doesn't exceed 34, 32 feet, 33 feet roughly. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the second row that would like to speak? Third row? Again, please state your name, your address and...
I am Mary Zander, 2A, Z-A-A-N-D-E-R. I signed up on the sheet. I live at 121 Ford Street and, I have to find the mousey. There we go. I was thinking about scale and some comments. Alderman Cummings was talking about the Muse and, and so I just went out to take some photographs today. Oh, first, I did want to show you. This is the neighborhood that we have. You get an idea of our setbacks, our house sizes, the heights, not big houses, medium-sized houses, nicely set back, nice movement, as they say, nice movement. So I'm the measuring feature here. And so what we have on these three different shots are a building that is, I believe, 39 feet and I'm 10 feet away because that's where we were the last time we were here as far as 10-foot setback. And that was the height of the building. Second building to the right is then, however tall that is, I think that's 35 feet. This sidewalk is 14 feet away. And then we have the Muse, which is unknown height, but the sidewalk is 24 feet away. So it kind of gives you an idea of how distance from the building, and we are standing for this photo at 30 feet from the sidewalk in the, in the street for the most part. So the first, so you can get an idea of what the scale feels like to a person on the sidewalk when there's very little setback to that building, the one on the left being 10 feet. So you can see that the comparative, comparative size is very tall. As you get further away, the comparative size of the building goes down. And that is a very important feature of a setback and it is, as you saw in the picture of our neighborhood, the part where the neighbors are out and about and meeting, greeting, and so forth. Okay, so I'm just going to show you the same idea but back 10 more feet. So that was at 30 feet and when this one opens up, we'll be at 40 feet. So I have to, oh, here we are. We are now at 40 feet back. And so it's really, you can see, I tried to keep myself about the same size. Looks pretty good. And comparatively, how much bigger the buildings are when you are closer to them from the sidewalk and when you have a taller building. And you can see with the Muse on the right that the scale looks much different than when you are 10 feet away from a nearly 40-foot tall building. So then I thought about what makes the Muse...
Can I clarify one thing? Can you go back to that one picture?
I hope so.
The arrow's going to work better.
The W down at the bottom. Very hot.
Building one and building two are the same exact building.
They are the same building.
Right, just to clarify. The one on the left and the one on the right are exactly the same building.
But they are different elevations because of the grade.
Yeah, one's the back and one's the front.
Right.
The definition doesn't change.
No, but the, we're not talking definition, we're talking about scale at this point and how it feels from the setback area, you know, so the height, the actual height of the front and how that feels according to the 10-foot setback or a 14-foot setback or the height of the building. All right, so here we are. So here we are at the Muse, looking at them from the side. And what we notice here is the garage is off the back. And what we have in the proposed development is the garage underneath the living space. And it's that garage under the living space that elevates that to such a tall height to start with. And it kind of separates it from the neighborhood scale. It takes it away from being grounded in the neighborhood and makes it much more elevated. So all the living and coming and goings is now at a taller, different level. So that's one thing that I think the Muse did much better than this proposed development is doing. And another that was brought out by Siobhan, our, our park district person, is that we have in the proposed development, no outdoor living spaces. And I think people, I really like my outdoor living spaces and I think even people, if I was to downsize, I think to a place where I didn't have a yard, I think a patio or a deck or something, place to sit would make even more, would be even more important to me. And the Muse and their little front courtyards have these lovely little places where you could have a cup of coffee, you know, sit in the evening, enjoy the, you know, birds and so forth. And so I think that that's something that could be, that could make this development, this proposed development, much better. Try this W thing again, wait. Wait, hold on. Sorry about this, this is not my style of computer here. Okay, so this is just to remind me that I was here, maybe it was two years ago, when our developer told us that there was no way that the pure oil building could be saved to be turned into drive-throughs for the bank. But the people came and they, they said, "No, we really think that this pure oil building is very good. It's very important." And it was through that dialogue and that persistence that, you know, you know, somehow it got saved, you know, some plan got made that it got saved and it turned into an award-winning thing that was better for everybody. So I think that there's a lot of room to work together, to come with, up with plan. And when I look at the, the plans themselves and I see the, the buildings up against the sidewalk, Route 31, you know, very tall buildings, you don't have a parkway on the other side, as you were saying, of that, it's a wide sidewalk, but you don't have a parkway and so you get pretty closed in there. And if you, if you reduce that development size by two buildings, you could move those in quite a bit. If those two four-unit buildings, top and bottom, were then three-unit buildings, it gives you a lot of leeway. And you have to realize the developer has a different objective than we do. And the developer's objective, you know, no judgment made here, is to make as much money on his/her investment as they can. And as the neighbors, as the neighborhood, we want to make the best kind of development. And we hope that you'll hold the developer to high standards and work together to make a, a better development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the third row?
Oh, take that profile away, would you?
You're beautiful, Sharon. Yeah, right. I don't know how to take it away exactly.
Yeah, I'm Sharon Jones and I live at 521 Franklin Street by the Muse, okay? And I tell you, I, you know, you've used some really neat references today, Craig and your reference to the vision. I think you mentioned about shifting demographics. And Les, you know, I've had my eye on your property for a few years. He's over there mowing and I bike over there and say, "When's this going to get developed? Because I want to come and live here. We want to get, sell someday our 100-year-old foursquare, right?" And downsize, Clyde's down, we're down to one car, we're walking the walk, not talking the talk. We only want one garage. We want 16, 1700 square feet. We don't, less is more, all right? And that's why I think things are changing, John, I really do. Especially, I think, our town vision-wise has come to significantly understand what the assets are in this community. One, it's a still, gets a feel of a small town. And, and that vision of being able to walk, like some of you said, in the neighborhood and talk to people. Yes, we are a commuter town. We have a small town, we have all those wonderful things, but I don't, I have not heard the emphasis here that I would like to hear for the importance of the environment to us and to nature as we continue to live. That's why. I want to be near nature. This ideal setting, you have property here, Les' property, is just unbelievable because we can get out there, walk, I can bike, bike to the Blue Goose, right? I can go down to the River Park and weed some more, Mary, right? And I can go to the concerts in my River Park. And I can go hike in Wheeler Park. And I can go to the senior center, all right? This is an asset, unbelievable asset for the future, for the green living. Get something small in there. Let me have one car garage. This is a new life that we're embracing, but also, the city of Geneva has recognized its assets. It is still a small town. People, you all know where I live, most of you. You know there are three homes being built in my backyard where there was one 50's ranch next to Merritt King. I am fine with that, all right? But I tell you, people are craving to live in the old part of town. This isn't 30 years ago anymore, this town. This town's different from other suburbs. We want that old way of living and walking and connecting and making a sense of place and community. So build on those assets. Get green things in there. Go green. We've got to bring the nature into our yards. But I want to live in nature. I don't want to be boxed in and have TV screens and everything in Alzheimer's units, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the third row?
My name is Teresa Keenan. I live at 1765 Southampton Court here in Geneva. I have been watching this property with maybe a little more interest than some because I had two of the properties listed that these fellows secured. Without going into great detail, we didn't have a very pleasant relationship, our little cronies here behind me. So I'm asking you, as are Aldermen and our city developers, to please perhaps slow down. This doesn't need to be rammed through tonight. We have an amazing, amazing little historic district and it's what has driven most of us to visit here, perhaps live here, raise our families here. So I'm just asking that we be mindful of the parameters that we've set with regards to the height of these buildings. And when we say, you know, it's only this high from the sidewalk... And when we say, you know, "It's only this high from the sidewalk, you'll never see the back of it," well, perhaps we won't if we're out walking our dog, but if we're the neighbor who lives across the street, for sure we will. And I'm not one of the neighbors. I don't live in the historic district. But I do a lot of business there, and a lot of my fellow residents live there. It's what makes our town so charming. I cringed when I heard the remark about moving the sidewalk closer to the street. I've got a young fella in my household who rides his bike 1,000 miles a summer, and the thought of him riding his bike too close to one of those streets, Stevens Street or Route 31, just makes me cringe. I don't think moving a sidewalk closer to a street is a very good idea in town. I'm just asking, and I think the town home idea is great. I think that's a perfect use in that particular area. I would have never guessed that Shodine, Mr. Shodine, would have sold his town homes right over here by the train station so quickly. Four units went like that, from $400,000 to $450,000, on very busy South Street where the commuters live, right next to the parking deck over there that we've just finished up. Never in a million years would I have guessed they would have gone so quickly. I think there is a need for town homes, for sure. But let's make sure we keep an eye on who's developing our properties. If they're assuming things, or they forgot to mention something, or perhaps I misrepresented, let's cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure we're getting exactly what we were expecting to get, and that we don't have somebody who's asking forgiveness instead of asking permission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Burgess, and I live at 537 North First Street, right down the street from the proposed development. And I'm just concerned about what this is going to look like from Route 31. If I'm walking down the street, is it just going to be a whole though of 30-foot-tall buildings next to the sidewalk? And that's how we enter into our town. Is that what we want to see? Because it is going to be very tall and just solid buildings. That's all I, my only question right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the fourth row?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Pastorello, and I live at 318 North Second Street. In the interest of not repeating what's already been said, I just wanted to voice my support for the thoughts and the concerns and considerations of the other neighbors here, and would be in support and would strongly urge that you consider any further modifications to density, height, and setback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the fourth row?
Hi, my name is Jim Anderson. I'm at 427 Ford Street, and I was going to just echo what Mary had just said, but then I heard Alderman Maladra, sir, thank you, mention about Second Street, and that's really the only sightline that matters, but there is a cemetery to the west of there that I believe is the oldest cemetery in Geneva, and I think that matters. That's important. I think a lot of people visit there. I believe the mayor marched there on Memorial Day last year, ended there with a ceremony, so that does matter. To the north is Wheeler Park, visited by thousands every year. I think that matters. I think what they see from that park matters. Can I see a show of hands of how many of you have visited the property since this process has started? Okay, good, good. I'm a little concerned when each of you start asking questions, and the first thing you say is, "I don't know anything about architecture, or sales, or development, or real estate." And it seems to me that this gentleman knows a lot about it. Your audience seems to know a lot about it, but the people who are going to be voting on this don't seem to know a lot about it. I don't know how you can go on with this process if you don't at least explore some elements of architecture and real estate and sales and development, and walk around this neighborhood and look at that and look at what we're proposing. It doesn't take a lot of effort to do that. And I agree, we should slow down, take a little time, learn about it. Go look at the cemetery again. Go stand in the park and look back at where this is going to go. Stand on Second Street. Stand on some of our porches. Take some time. Think about this. Think about 10 or 20 or 30 years down the road, what will it look like? What will people think? And I think, you know, all of us are really for developing the property. It's a tremendous opportunity for the entire community. We just want to take a breath, think about it, meditate on it, whatever you guys like to do. But, you know, spend some time. Find out about all these different issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the fourth row?
Kurt Byer, 124 Stevens. John, thanks for moving the entrance. But that's all I'm begging you for. We've got more work to do. I believe with Mr. Orvath, I believe with Mary, slow down. Let's take a look. Let's, you know, this is going to make a huge impact. And I've been there, you know, been here a little while. I'm not leaving anywhere. I think most of my friends and family there. And spend some time in our streets. Check out our kids. We've got a lot going on. And I think you might get a sense of where we're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the fourth row? Oh, we're really not on that side yet, but that's okay. I should have said fourth row, left side. My mistake. No, that's.
This is my first meeting, so I apologize.
That's okay.
But I'm up here, so I'll go.
Okay.
I'm Sarah Kate Jeffrey, and I live at 301 North Fourth. And unfortunately, was unable to make the first two meetings, but have read what my neighbors have said, and, you know, I don't want to echo everything, but I appreciate the wanting to add the density for various reasons, and I know that it's desirable to do that. But I also know that there is a great desire for single-family homes, as clear as we're cramming them in to the downtown area and to some other neighborhoods that are dividing lots and all that, and don't get me started. But I think that there's ways to make this kind of a multi-functional development. I mean, can we have smaller standalone homes along with the town homes? Because I do agree that we do need that, and apparently there's a demand. But just different things that we can look at, and again, the slowdown. And selfishly, I'm invested in this neighborhood. And, you know, something like this, is that going to make the rest of the neighborhood devalued? Because all of a sudden, we have this monstrosity, which may or may not all sell out, and who knows how long that takes? And how well-kept is the property five years from now, and only half the homes are sold, you know, worst-case scenario? So just consider the value of the entire neighborhood, those that have invested, that have improved our homes under the strict historic district regulations, and we have maintained those. And just consider us in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the left and the fourth row on this side? Fifth row, last row, anybody?
My name is Brandon Anderson, and I'm at 328 North Second Street, so kitty corner from the development. And I just want to say again, thank you for listening to your constituents and for reading our emails, and we're so appreciative to see this in work and in action and to see that you've taken us seriously, so thank you. And I want to say thank you too to John. We're grateful to see that driveway moved to North Street. We do think that would help. But as another neighbor mentioned, we do see that as the only give that's come from the developers so far. We still have issues with the height, density, and setback. The extra seven feet that's been given on that southwest corner wasn't really given. It was more an oversight in the mathematics of how that building. Well, it was, you know, that there's going to be some 21-foot units and some 24, and so it really, while we're glad for that seven feet, we really don't feel like that was a give. The thing that we, I keep being surprised to hear when we hear John talk about, well, you know, "We don't want to do a one-car garage," or "We don't want to have them all be 21 feet." I just keep wondering, why not lose a unit there? Why not, why do they have to be six-foot, you know, six-unit buildings along that side? Why can't, you know, could we go down to a few less units on the, what would help with density, that would allow for some more setback, to have a few less units in there? Again, we are all for density. We are so excited to see more families in the neighborhood, more people shopping downtown. And if you would have shown us the muse as the drawing for this, with 30 of the muse homes put in there, we would not have rallied the troops and would not have, we would have been happy to see that go in. You wouldn't have had our loud voices at all these meetings. Again, because of the height of the muse, because the driveways or the garages are, you know, not adding to that extra height, because the muse do have that personal yard space that makes them quaint and helps them to hold their value. One thing that we're very concerned about is that there will be a limited market for the people who can afford these homes, who want the size of homes, who are able to do the stairs, that many stairs, and who don't want any of their own personal yard space. And so our concern is that, you know, a few of the buildings will get built, and then the rest might not sell for quite some time. What happens in that case? Do they become luxury rentals, like the Shodine building on Third Street that has not been able to sell and is now rentals? So we'd like to ask that, you know, you consider what can be done to help with the height and the setback? And also, if we get down, you know, if this gets this far where this plan is approved, if we could talk about the timing and the schedule of the build-out, that perhaps it is started along 31 and North Street, so that, worst-case scenario, if those units don't sell, or if they know they won't be able to sell the whole block, that there would be a corner space closer to our neighborhood, the historic district, that could then maybe be used for other purposes. I know John's original plans to the city were for some duplex, John, if I'm saying this right, but they were more like ranch-style duplexes for retirees, and those plans, the city did not approve. Is that correct, David? Or he was encouraged not to go that route. John originally proposed two rows of town homes along Route 31, where it's already zoned for that. And then on the west side of the block, he had proposed duplex, smaller buildings that would be ideal for those who don't want lots of stairs or don't want to be in that town home environment. And I think those plans were suggested, that that was not the route the city staff had hoped he would go.
You interject.
Yeah, please, because, I mean, we're excited about those plans, so.
All right. Yeah. And we talked about this two weeks ago. She's referring, these two buildings were pulled in over here, and we had a triplex, a triplex, a triplex, all ranch. So we actually had more units than we had now. But as we worked through with staff, one of the things, thoughts were, quite frankly, is some of the value here is you have the front elevations to the street. You don't have direct driveway accesses like you have in any one of the homes, they have their access. If we were to have a ranch duplex, triplex building here, those driveways were going to come out to Stevens. They were going to come out to Second, they'd come out to North. And one of the things, as we worked through staff, because we looked at four or five different site plan options, that, quite frankly, was probably, accesses was one of the things that actually made it not feel as much as a single neighborhood as this does, you know? So we gave up, actually, two units to go to this plan, but we collectively, the professionals, the planners, the landscape architects, thought that this was a stronger plan for all concerned. All right? And just so to say, the muse, near as my math can tell, is as tall, and if you count the firewalls, is taller than our buildings.
So I'll finish up, but I just would like to say, I think you kind of, when John shows, if he clicks through to these pictures here, there's kind of a collective gasp of how large that building looks. This is the smallest of the buildings that Mr. Luzinski is proposing to build, so keep that in mind. This is the, the others are two units larger. And when you talk about the view from the sidewalk, from standing at the sidewalk, the reality is that we are seeing that from our houses, from our front porches, from across the street, from when we drive by Stevens. So to talk about the height of the front doesn't really apply to the way we live in our neighborhood. So I think that's all I have. But again, thank you. We appreciate, you know, your time, and we just want you to, yeah, this is, this will be here for 100 years, so let's just make sure we do it right. And there's, and there's lots of options to be, to be had, so.
Thank you. Anyone else in the last row on the side?
I missed the first two meetings. Hi, my name is Michael Wolf. I'm at 327 North Second Street. So I'm speaking as someone who lived in Geneva for a decade to finally get a chance to move into the historic district, so I'm one of the people who spent 12 months working and appreciating the toils of a contractor probably in building a new home in the historic district, so I'm actually about 50 yards from new property. I don't want to beat the issue to death so much, but definitely the issues of height, density, and setback. Clearly, I echo all of those issues. I actually thought, Alden Maladra, I thought when you were going with, up to the point you were making, I thought you were with us in terms of really appreciating what, when I moved my family out here a decade ago and I do the 40-mile trek to downtown Chicago to Northwestern, that this was going to be worth it, because this was the town, you know, the, near the density, the small homes, the charm of it was really what I drove here. So when I look at the elevation of my current house and think of the real height that this will kind of dwarf over the community, I just think that, while as much as I appreciate hearing about some of the changes that have been kind of made, I think that if we can still kind of push for what this actually would look like if we could make a few additional changes, I am not in the business of prescribing or knowing how best to achieve some of that, but I definitely think that what I've currently seen right now, I'm hoping that we can continually make some more progress and some additional changes, because I do think that you want development, you want opportunity in Geneva, you want to preserve what we have. But at the same time that, you know, I think what you hear a lot of people saying is that, you know, this is a very precious commodity that would have a dramatic impact on how people receive Geneva as they come into the city, as they exit it. Also, on a community that, I have to say that since I've been in Geneva for nine and a half years, it's not, since this past year of really getting to know the neighbors that I'm in right now that are in the room, how much I appreciate the city. And I would hate to think that that was something that was impacted by just, you know, some quick thinking about, just wanting to possibly fill a vacant lot. Because the reality is, is that I think Geneva doesn't realize, I mean, if you're thinking that this is the only opportunity that you have, this is a city that is in great demand. I think it's just the issue of making sure that you preserve why people want to come here. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the last row on this side that'd like to speak? Last row on my right, your left, anybody in the back there that'd like to speak?
Good evening. Siobhan Lambalot, Executive Director, Geneva Park District. To piggyback on a comment that was just made, I believe that this community is in very high demand. And I believe that is in large part because of our school district and our park district and the excellent reputation that we have and the outstanding services that we provide. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the park district for the full land cash contribution. I believe that it is warranted based on the language within our city ordinance as well as the state statute. I believe it's warranted due to the impact of this high-density development on the neighboring park as well as on the community as a whole. I also wanted to clarify a point. I also wanted to clarify a point that's been made in regard to high-density development, and that is that it attracts a demographic that is not conducive to the park district. That is a perception that might have been true in the 70s, when everybody thought of a park district, they thought of a place where they sent their kids. I can assure you that that's no longer the case. I think everybody in this room can agree with that, because I see all of you on the trails, in our fitness centers, and at our facilities, often. Our largest demographic right now is baby boomers. Our three largest program areas directly benefit the demographic that is going to be moving into these high-density neighborhoods. We operate and maintain two fitness centers, and our health and wellness programming within the city of Geneva is one of our largest programming areas. So, these high-density developments will be impacting the park district, that is exactly the demographic that we service a majority of the time, and I would venture to guess that if any of you have been on the Fox River Trail, or at Peck Farm Park, or at any of our trails throughout the city of Geneva, you know that we are the people who use those trails. So, for those reasons, I would like to advocate that we continue to collect the full land cash contribution amount that is outlined in our ordinance, and I believe that benefits our community as a whole the best. And I believe that our community is one of high quality, and in order to maintain that, this is an avenue that is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the last row that'd like to speak? The fourth row? Third row, oops.
Use the word "promote" for the last one. Hi, my name's Rob Kelly, I live at 108 South River Lane in Geneva. And, you know, I don't object to the building, per se, I think it actually looks nice, reminds me of a building that we did, but ours adhered with the zoning that was already in place. So, I think if we start having people develop buildings of this scale, and change the zoning in a way that negatively affects the people who make up the neighborhood, and who make Geneva what it is, and why people are interested in living here, which is, you know, smaller neighborhoods, our kids can walk around, and we know what we're in for. I think when you buy a property, it's up to you to realize what can go on around your property, and understand the zoning. So, you buy a house with that premise, and I'm guessing you wouldn't enjoy the fat, or the, the idea of your house being encroached on by a building, which might be legal with change zoning, but the zoning that you moved into that house with, you know, I just think that, that if it adheres to the zoning that's in place, you know, more power to them, and I wish you luck. If you have to change the zoning in a way that's going to affect these people that live in this neighborhood and that make this town what it is, I absolutely object.
In the third row?
My name is Colin Campbell, I live at 18 South Sixth Street. Throughout this entire discussion, there's been a great deal of talk about the height of the building, and the appearance of the height, and it's kind of hard to visualize that, sitting here, and I would like to offer a visualization for you real quick, if I may. Think back to summer, to the Olympics, to the diving competition, the 10-meter tower. Picture a 10-meter tower, how high it is. The highest point of this building is six feet higher, way up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the third row?
Hi, everyone, Adam McMillan, M-C-M-I-L-L-E-N, 720 Anderson Boulevard in Geneva. So, I'm a little ways away from the development on Anderson, but I see this setting a precedent, so I just wanted to chime in here. I, I've dedicated my life to buildings, buildings are my livelihood, I love developments. I was a home builder in the past, now I do commercial buildings, and I believe in sustainable, energy-efficient, high-performance buildings. I know that's not the topic here. I am a little curious what energy code this will be built to. I'm assuming it's IACC 2012, if anyone's taking notes. But, in general, I want to talk about is, you know, I stand, I stand here today, about eight months ago, we came for a variance to our own home. Our house is built in 1940s, the peak of that house, when I was doing the roof this summer, was about 22 feet tall. So, our request was to put an open porch on the front of our house that would bring our setback from about 29 feet to about 21 feet from the sidewalk. Anderson's a boulevard, so there's another 10 feet all the way to the street. And that setback, that variance request was denied because it encroached on, to the sidewalks. So, different developments are different, I just ask that the committee and everyone else be consistent on how you do treat the whole neighborhood, because it does matter a lot. And as it relates to this, I'm assuming that a lesser setback is already in place for there, but I think that is important to maintain the neighborhood. A couple of other questions I wanted to just ask about the renderings and what we saw, just so that those are, I mean, this doesn't, I mean, I drive this way, but this doesn't matter where I walk with my kids, we walk to Wheeler Park, we turn before the cemetery, so we won't go by that part of it. But, just for those that are you're around it, I just wanted to, a couple of things I noticed from just this review today. Two, I guess, does this setback here reflect, that visual here reflect the same setback as shown here?
No.
No, okay.
It actually shows a lot. Go back to that rendering.
Yep.
You can see that parkway is a lot shorter.
But the sidewalk to here, is that more or less?
The sidewalk to the building is true, sidewalk to the curb is not.
This, okay, so this is the same as, as this?
Is that all we were really worried about, is the sidewalk?
Do we get these sweet trees in this park back here? Because that would be... Okay. The other question, have, has a rendering been done that shows the actual adjacencies to the other buildings? So, not the trees that are shown here, but the actual other buildings? I mean, have, has anyone got a chance to see? I mean, if the, if the main question is what is, what is the impact, what is the pop, I'm just curious if that rendering's been made, or if it could be made to show that. Or moreover, a rendering that shows the houses that are here along the street there? Because I think if you saw that 3D rendering, or you could build it in wood, I think that would show at least, you know, what kind of scale that would change. It could be really useful. Instead of, instead of an isolated view, I just think that could help the crowd. Again, it's not across from my house, so it doesn't matter to me as much, but I just want to make sure that, you know, you see the other houses here and not the trees, which they can come, it'd just take about 50 or 60 years. I'm not, I don't mean to be smart on this. And then, the final, so, and then the other thing that I heard, and this is the first meeting that I've come to too, but, a lot about the movement and the architecture, which is good, I'm an engineer, not an architect, so, but I do understand buildings pretty well, and I understand space. And we've got the movement here showing in the renderings. If the question is Stevens and the parkway, are we going to have the same movement along this side and this side? Because that's the, that's the view that needs the movement to give you the setback feel that's here. Because you can walk, or walk or run down here, and you'll see this setback here, and you'll feel the relief, but that's a pretty sharp corner here, the parkway will help, trees will help, and I would, I guess if you kind of clean that up, maybe that could help set that back to.
Will that building two, Adam, that's the, the one on the right-hand side of the diagram, will that also be back seven feet, like the building?
You left all the other ones, the 24-foot mark, if, if, how wide they are?
John, excuse me for interrupting, you use the microphone, we've got tens of millions walking around. I don't want to take the phone calls tonight to ask what you said.
Is your microphone on?
All the other buildings are drawn at the 24-foot wide units. What I said is, if any of these actually sold and became a narrow elevation, we would pull the street side in. So, if this actual sales mix was more of the smaller units, which, at least we got one person that's interested in a smaller unit, this would come back. Or if it's built to this exact mix, it would come back six feet. This is, yeah, it would come back seven feet. Just like a four-unit building, if it's that exact mix, would come in, in six foot.
A couple of other just random thoughts, too. I think if the park is here to the side, and this green space is here, some connectivity, green-wise, bike-wise, or otherwise, could probably be really useful for some of that space, as would along Stevens there. My other thought, too, is I, I'm assuming that under some number of these meetings and discussions, that this will eventually get built in some form. So, it is going to set a precedent, and I guess I would ask that maybe we try to set another precedent for Geneva, and maybe seek lead neighborhood development certification, or seek some sort of sustainably focused, you know, attracting new demographics, so the book's probably going to talk about young millennials and other people that want this neighborhood, and they want these 100 buildings, so if we could set a new Geneva precedent with this, for, I don't, I mean, pick your rating system, pick your certification, meet the energy code, do something so that, as a community, we can move forward on another initiative while we change the neighborhood a little bit, and use the parks there as an excuse, use the river down the hill as an excuse, the park that's already there, let's make those connected, let's connect that new riverwalk to this, to Wheeler, you could connect the whole thing, you can go all the way down Batavia all the way to St. Charles, and this could, instead of being viewed as a one-off, you could integrate it a little bit better that way, if we spend the time just to make those changes and bring it back to scale. And again, as I started to, again, my house, 22 feet, sitting on my roof, I can't move out eight feet to add an open porch, which I understand the rules, I don't want someone to tear down my neighbor's house and put up a monster either, and I appreciate those rules that are in place. I just want to be consistent across all the developments. We've been here for seven years, I don't plan to leave, so I hope we can move it forward.
Thank you.
I had one question for Adam. Can you give a couple examples of what you mean by connectivity? Because I don't know architecture or engineering.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is a hard stop. I'm assuming bikes aren't going to go through there. This is a hard stop. This is a gathering place, I'm assuming, for residents, or 133 cars, four cars per building, it's kind of heavy, but I'm sure that's up to them. So, if you can imagine bike, bikers, so I bike, I go up, down along the river, and I come up Stevens to get to Anderson, Anderson's a very popular bike route. You could go through Wheeler, it's a little bit out of the way, but this sets the perfect opportunity to connect that through. So, if you can imagine the riverwalk over here, and the bike trails, long-term urban planning, you could leverage this parkway, leverage something through here to connect it to Wheeler, and then move it on through for runners or otherwise. You're going to need a little bit more work down through here, but it's probably already started there. But, you know, these hard stops, really, you've, I know you want to get the cars from going through here, but let people and bikes and others walk through there, so maybe these neighbors in the other areas would become neighbors with these people here, but the way this is set up now, it's kind of shut off for passing through, and if that's what the feel they need because they want privacy, that's completely up to the developer, that's not me to say. Just pointing out an opportunity.
What we do have is...
Thank you. John?
Those buildings here, we did think about it. We run, obviously, we got sidewalk, we, right now, sidewalk does not exist by north, we're going to have sidewalk on north, obviously, on the perimeter, and then we tie every unit to the sidewalk in the front, and then we tie all the way through the site with the sidewalk brick-paver system, this way. The thought was, we weren't trying to actually to tie into Stevens, but obviously, you can see there, we just got a short landscape area where we're buffering, lights to come through, but those can be easy connections, but quite frankly, that's not the location where we want people cutting through to get to Wheeler Park. We'd rather them follow the, if they're not within the property, to follow the sidewalk to get up there.
Okay. Well, that's a fair statement, it's certainly your, your development. But I guess if you want to integrate with the neighborhood, let it, let it flow and connect would be my just, my two cents, for whatever that's worth. But that's, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Do you have any question?
Sure.
Do you guys live here in Geneva?
No, I live in St. Charles.
Live in St. Charles, you don't live in Geneva?
Can you, you need to come to the podium if you need to ask...
Mr. Chairman, I believe that is an irrelevant question, and I would ask that it not be addressed and/or responded to. They are property owners in the city of Geneva, they have every right that you do, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
Kurt Byer, 124 Stevens. I'd like to comment on his, could I ask the developer to do a scale from his development with height to my house and across the street, and kind of see that, could you do renderings for us? To see really what that really looks like? Because my house isn't on here, and the height of it isn't on here, so to maybe bring it into scale, is that possible?
It's not a render, it's a model.
Well, whatever you call it, then that might give us all an idea of what I look like across the street, looking at this proposed development, and also the Andersons as well. That's a request. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from the, from the dais?
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Alden Maladra?
Uh, so, it seems like some of the things I threw out there served as something of a lightning rod, that wasn't my intent, I thought everybody'd go, oh, that was a very sage comment, and we'd be done, but since they did. First, my comments about Wheeler Park and the cemetery weren't meant to be flipped, they were meant to say that it's my feeling that that open space helps offset the mass that we're looking at. Right or wrong, I also said I'm not an architect, so I could be wrong about those things, but as I walk that neighborhood, I'm, I'm walking down Stevens Street, thinking these are big and tall, and then I'm turning on Second, heading towards Wheeler Park, with the cemetery at my next, and it just doesn't feel as imposing as it does on Stevens Street. You can disagree with that or not, but it's, it was a, there was some thought to the comment. Overall, I want to say this, change is hard, change is especially difficult in Geneva. Many of the comments that I've heard tonight, I heard similar comments when we were talking about the single-family homes at Dodson Place, comments about the height, I remember we were, we were talking about the height of those houses, and how we said everything, even to the couple of, I don't remember the name of that house. I heard the same comments about the townhomes that were built there, I've heard the same comments about all of Dodson Place, and all of the condos that Shodine wanted to put in, and at the end of the day, the, the doom and disaster that was predicted at that time did not materialize. At the same time, I think that the doom and the disaster may not have materialized because we worked at it as a community. So, for you, John, I think that you heard a lot tonight, a lot of comments, you've been working with the neighborhood and with the elderly men involved, I think that that should continue, so that at the end of it, you get something that's really special, and the community gets something as well. gets something as well. But again, change is coming, folks. The, the way that Geneva developed up until, you know, 1985 changed when Pepper Valley went in. That was something different, the community never saw anything like that before, and we're going to see a similar sort of sea change again. And so this kind of thing is happening, and how we, how we get it into the community is going to be our collective challenge from this point forward. That's really all I wanted to throw out now.
Thank you. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I have a question for Mr. Eric DeGroot. I've always been somewhat uncomfortable with the discussion about setbacks from the sidewalk. The widths of the parkway varies considerably around the city, and as a matter of fact, the parkway on this one particular block is equal to the largest parkways we have anywhere in the city, and it only exists for the one block. Talk about consistency, the other side of Stevens Street has a much smaller parkway where it does exist. There are places where there is no sidewalk, even on the south side of Stevens, and some of the house setbacks there, I understand, are grandfathered in, but they're very small. So the consistency between the north side and the south side of Stevens does not exist. This one block, this sidewalk, which has this very large parkway, doesn't even line up with a sidewalk to the east, and of course, there is no sidewalk to the west of it. This is an orphan piece of sidewalk, so I think the idea that this sidewalk could move closer to the street, whether or not the developer wanted to do that, to me, it makes little difference. The true visual impact of this building is going to be to people driving by in a car. And this is a very large setback from the curb for anything in this district. If you look through this whole district, you'll see that this is the largest setback, completely inconsistent with anything else on Stevens Street, and its sidewalk doesn't even line up with anything. So although Ms. Sanders made a very nice presentation on setbacks, this is a rather unique situation here where the setback that exists, to me, was equal to the length of a car that parked in front of the greenhouse when it was there and had little to do with any consistency on Stevens. Right now, it's paved as a, as a parking spot for the green, for the no longer existing greenhouse. So I think the setback is quite a lot, and that the visual aspect of this on Stevens Street will be a lot less than people think. It's 35 feet and it's a long way back from the curb because of this abnormally wide parkway. And so I've changed my mind on this and I still haven't decided whether I'm voting yes or no, but as for all the talk about consistency and setbacks, I think that's misplaced here because this block is very unique in this area, and I don't understand why it has this existing parkway that is inconsistent with anything else around there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any, why do, why does our zoning code talk only about setback from the sidewalk? Is that because the sidewalk is typically set right up against the right-of-way?
The setback is taken from the property line of, of the lot, so it, in this case, the sidewalk abuts the property line, so we're talking about it as, as if it's from the edge of the sidewalk. That's not always the case.
So Stevens has an extra wide, it is an extra wide street already, but you're telling me it has an extra wide right-of-way?
It is, it has...
So that it at some point could be a three or four-lane road.
Our standard right-of-way is 60, is 66 feet, this right-of-way is 80 feet.
80 feet.
And in this case, you have a 20-foot parkway or the, the green area before the sidewalk.
Which you agree is equal to anything we have in town, 20 feet. The rest of this neighborhood typically is less than that.
It is, it's, it's not a typical parkway.
So I think that mitigates somewhat the, the visual height of this building because of that. But, so, but you're saying in the, in the zoning code, there's, there's, the zoning code talks only about setback from the property line?
From the property line, correct.
And doesn't address how far the property line is from the existing curb?
It does not.
And, well, I would certainly fight forever widening Stevens Street, even though it's a truck route. So I think this, this curb line is going to remain because it's, this curb line is consistent with the rest of Stevens Street, both the east and the west, and I don't see the city ever widening Stevens Street all the way up to Anderson, so, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Flanagan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I, I would be in favor of leaving the sidewalk where it's at because I, too, think that the parkway is an added benefit to this development, so I wouldn't move it. That would be my, that's only my opinion, though. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Yes, sir. Sure.
Dan Horvath, 115-4, just a couple of things to clarify, with all due respect to the aldermen, we're creating straw men here. We all said, bring it on. We all did. We're not opposed to change. We, we're trying to change our houses and we're not allowed to, so we don't need to, you know, we're not, there's no doom and gloom here. We're entering into a conversation to try to affect change on something that we see doesn't fit into our community from the short view. The shortest of views, which is the sidewalk, which is a clarification I'd like to address to Alderman Brown, we walk our community and that building is 40 feet tall, 10 feet away from where I walk my dog and where we ride our bikes and we come around the blind curb that was pointed out by this gentleman I'll introduce myself to later. We're, we're not preaching doom and gloom, okay? We, you haven't heard that all night. I promise you, we're not saying that. We're saying, let's create a conversation that affected good change at Pure Oil at the riverfront, which ended up with a park, at the Creamery, when they want, it was going to be torn down and now it's a jewel of the river. This was done by the, this happening, and no one ever said anything about doom and gloom. I mentioned it in my email to all of you on Friday. We are not the opposition. This is, this is democracy in action, and we're just trying to see if we can find some common ground, and common ground can't be met tonight with a yes vote. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Kilburg.
I'd like to make a motion to move the vote to a date certain of February 23rd.
Second. Yeah, um, we're, we're, we're just having conversation right now about the general piece, then we have to vote on each one of these E, F, and G separately?
Is, is that motion appropriate at the time of calling the vote?
There's already a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there is a motion on E.
Well, for sure, G.
Before we make that, I'd like to let Alderman Kilburg and anyone else who hasn't spoken on the dais, because I'd like to say a few words myself. Go ahead.
I don't know who wants to answer this, but a few months ago, we had a presentation that was conducted as related to demographics and community and, in the community is, and some things that the city of Geneva needs to do to come into compliance with state mandates as it relates to, for lack of a better term, affordable housing. Of these units, how many of them would comply with the objective that the city of Geneva needs to move toward over the next decade?
What this, what the city adopted back in October was a goal of making all, or 15% of all new development affordable units. It's not a mandate, it's, it's a goal with this development, none of them are affordable.
None of them, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess I get to speak because, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, too, that by adopting the housing plan itself, we meet the criteria in the Affordable Housing Act. So having a plan in place...
Right.
Brings us into compliance. I think that's, was your general question in nature? Are we in compliance with the Affordable Housing Act?
There's still, there are still elements of, of that, though, that we still need to meet, right?
Our own plan, the, the, having the plan meets the act. Our own plan says the 15%, that's the city's adopted policy.
Right. But at some point in time, that 15% has to be identified, right?
Sure, yes.
Okay, and we haven't identified that yet, right?
It doesn't have to be on each and every development, but yes, overall.
No, I, I understand that, but...
Right.
Toward that goal, we have not yet met it or moved in that direction at all.
Yeah, we really haven't had a lot of developments since the policy was adopted.
But it looks like things are sort of heating up.
Yeah.
At some point in time, we're going to have to make some decisions as it relates to that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. As I had mentioned in, and I think I made the motion to move this, to, to not vote on this last time and to move it forward to this point here, I think that we can continue to move this thing forward for the next couple of years and not satisfy everybody's desire. And I echo a number of the comments that were made by my fellow aldermen. I, I believe that in good faith, the community has come with their issues, I believe in good faith, the developer has made a number of changes, I believe in good faith, the Plan Commission and all the members of that board spent a dubious amount of time to get us to this point. I believe we have a, a master plan that this city developed. It took, you know, a number of years with a tremendous amount of community input. The zoning ordinances that I'm a member of that committee as law, as well as Alderman Bruno, are all going to change. They're going to change to support the, the master, master plan, and so that will be coming in front of us as well. So a lot of these things that we're talking about are going to change anyhow. And, and I agree with Alderman Maladra, you know, change is going to come, and I'm not arguing that you folks aren't opposed to change, but I have, in my, on a personal note, I have seen a number of these buildings that I said, a number, a number of buildings to even the fireplace that sits up on, sits on Third Street. When that went in, I said, are you kidding me? Put that monstrosity in the middle of the street. But actually, now, I'm getting used to it and I'm enjoying it. And Dodson Place and the condos, apartments, that was a monstrosity. So it's difficult to go from green space to any height, green space to any driveway, green space to any density, but unfortunately, it's part of how we, as a community, have to move forward. We cannot move forward as a community with 200-year-old homes and 200-year-old buildings forever. I believe that we have a system and a group of people and engineers that, that, that do a fabulous job to do all the due diligence and vet this out and bring it to, before we, it gets here. And our job here is not to continue to do the job of the Plan Commission, but to vote on what has been presented to us, either yea or nay. But if we continue to push and kick this can down the road, we're going to push and kick this can down the road because I heard 10 different solutions, from driveways to houses to single-family to townhomes to 1,700 square feet, everybody's, everybody is an engineer, everybody's a real estate person. And in my opinion, none of us are. So leave it to the experts. We leave it to our city staff who are experts to bring this to us. We leave it to the Plan Commission who hear these things and vet these things out. It's on our table now to make a vote, and I think we should vote on it. The builder made some changes at the last meeting's request. We will continue to be making changes for the next year if we continue this process. So we need to make a decision and we need to move on it, in my opinion.
Call the question.
One comment?
Motion.
He called a question.
The chairman does not have to accept the call for question.
Right, you don't have to.
If the chairman believes someone has not spoken, the chairman can ignore a call for the question.
Everybody has spoken. Well, let's, let's, it's okay, Alderman Martin. Go ahead. Alderman Bruno, Alderman Cummings.
Just a little refinement here. Change, change is definitely going to be happening. You know, I'm looking, we're looking at three points here. One is to amend the downtown master plan, change the zoning from R6 to R7 for that property, and specifically approve the plan before us. As I've looked at this more and more, I am absolutely in favor in, in voting in the affirmative on, on E and F. I think R7 will actually, as was demonstrated, I think, create a better streetscape instead of front-facing garages and a bunch of curb cuts. I'm, I'm all on top of that. It is, it is, some of the specifics here and really the visualization, because quite honestly, a lot of the concern with the, with the height of this is because it's really difficult through, through plans and elevations for people to get a true sense of how it fits in. We, we do get some good information from these close-up renderings that's valuable, but I think a lot of people's concerns would be allied or confirmed if we saw those renderings from four blocks away as, as this property comes into view. So basically, what I would, I would amend my motion for tabling to simply table item G such that the developer might provide those types of visualizations.
Okay. Alderman Cummings?
I, I really am looking forward to seeing this property developed. I think we've had really good discussion. I think there have been interesting points brought up. I think there have been several interesting new points brought up. I think any time in a discussion that you continue to see forward progress and substantive recommendations that should be considered, then I don't think it should be voted on. I think it should be tabled. And I know that's frustrating. The idea of spinning Building 3 to a more vertical integration is interesting. I don't know if it works. Again, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I'm not shy about saying that, and I look to other ideas, other people that know what they're doing, for suggestions like that. I like the idea of, of putting in what you call movement on the south sides of Buildings 2 and whatever Building, the damn thing, I can't see ever, Building 4. If someone came here tonight and said, you know, I was over at Villa Verone and they have parakeets outside on the patio and I think everybody here ought to have parakeets, I'd say, you know what? That's it. We're voting, I can't listen to this anymore, but we have, we have very interesting stuff still coming to the table. I cannot support voting yes on this. Thank you.
Is that a second?
I would tend to agree with Alderman Cummings in that regard. I think the thing is, is when we approve this, then that's the end of any modifications to this footprint. And the thing is, the leverage that we have as a city and as a council is to continue the process and to move it forward, looking at the things that have been brought forward tonight, as well as seeing what the response of the developer would be to some of the things that were, were suggested. And once it's approved, that is really pretty much the end of our input as it relates to this development. I think some of the things that struck home with me this evening was the, the potential of this, this development as relates to our senior center. It's within walking distance that, that we have some, at times, created a double standard as it relates to the history or the historic district and as we look at this PUD and some of the sweeping changes that, that we're entertaining. I just feel as though to, to approve it this evening, I think it, it would be somewhat hasty, and I think that we can do better than what, what we have at the present time.
Yes. Mr. Kietrich?
I just wanted to point out to everyone that tonight is not an approval.
Understood.
This is a recommendation, so if the council or the committee of the whole wanted to set specific recommendations to amend the, the motion to include those specifics moving forward to next week's formal approval, you can do that as well. approval, you can do that as well.
Alderman Maladra.
I do, I do have a question about that. So I, I said that all those other concerns probably didn't result in the doom and gloom everybody feared because we talked about it, told you we have to continue that dialogue. I'm a little bit curious as to the mechanism for achieving that dialogue. What is, so, you know, what do we propose? We'll table it, that's great. We could table it for two weeks and nobody might talk to anybody else. So if we do vote to table, what is our mechanism for the, for the conversation to continue? That wasn't a question for you.
Who do we listen to? I took notes. There is a lot of conflicting, density's good, density's bad, height is good, height is bad. Sidewalks, they're there.
Trust me, it'll work itself out.
Who do we talk, I mean, that's what we've been trying to do.
And where I'm heading.
Tried to address everyone. I mean, the one thing we haven't addressed is make micro units. And I said, if you want us to put a small unit out there, we will, and let the market decide. I'll guarantee it, there ain't gonna be a market for a 1,700 square foot unit or a one-car unit. We can offer it. You know, that's simple.
Not. So I, I do put that question out to anybody up here who feels they wanna tackle it. So we, we favor postponement. For what?
Alderman Flanagan.
And I agree, Alderman Maladra, that we either give him the developer recommendations right now so that he can work on it and bring it back, or else if we just have him go there and look at the 50, excuse me, 15 or 16 people who basically talked about different elements of this development, but never came down to any, well, some of them came down to specifics, but whether they have the ability to change that based upon specifications or whatever information they need to do, they're just looking at it as a development. And unless we can sit there and basically say, oh, well, change this, or change that, or do that, I, I don't see it going anywhere. I think the development, unfortunately, has a lot of good points to it and some points that the neighbors don't necessarily agree with. But unless we can come as a body and come up with some recommendations, I don't know how we can keep postponing it. My, my thought.
Alderman Bruno.
For myself, I'm actually asking nothing in changes to the plan other than seeing it in a broader context. Cause I, I realize this really may not seem as massive, you know, cause I, it's, these plans can be tricky to look at, to look at these sheets of paper can be tricky. I've looked at lots of them. But what I haven't seen is something that, what's it look like is the entry corridor to Geneva? You know, I'm not asking with, with my motion to table to make any changes other than to show it in context. Thank you.
Our recommendation from the committee of the whole could be to have that prepared for us before we vote, take a final vote next week. One doesn't need to table to ask the developer to present more detail in his final presentation for the city council.
And don't they have software?
Go ahead.
Sorry. I spoke out of turn, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
But don't they have software that you can somehow do the replication?
Here the software.
Hold on, folks. Let's, let's hold on, folks. I mean, we, let, let's stop this right now. I mean, we're, we're not gonna fix thi, we're not gonna fix this tonight. Or, I mean, we've got, we've, we as a city have a process. The process is started, how long ago did this start, David? Last summer, okay? And we went through a process where the, with the plans were submitted to the city. The developer went through all the Plan Commission. The, the Plan Commission heard, the neighborhood heard your concerns. It's been brought to us. It was a unanimous vote at that level. The, we came here. Changes have been made to the plan. They came again. I don't think it, I don't think this is fair to the developer to ask them to keep, continue to go back and say, you know, spend some more money and show us what it's gonna look like from this street and from that street, and from this guy's porch and from that porch, okay? I don't think it's fair. If it's, if, if we're gonna do something, send this, then we should just send this back to square one. But we're not the people here to be sitting back and saying, you know, don't you have a software plan? Don't you, can't you put a sidewalk over there? I mean, I, this is ridiculous. This is not, this is not how this gets done. We have a process. We have people in place to, to follow that process. We're at a point right now. Now, you want to vote on this, ask for some conditions to this vote, and ask the developer if he'd be okay to come back next week for the final vote with those specific changes? But opening this up to everything from number of trees to sidewalk being moved to, I mean, this is, that is, I mean, come on. We can't ask that of, of the developer. I mean, this is just, if I'm him, I'd go say, heck with this, I'm going.
Are we allowed to talk still?
Sure.
Dan Horvath, 115 Ford. There is guidance. It's called, it's called the, the ordinances. He could start there. You know, you guys don't have to pass the way, the variances. 20-foot setbacks, 35-10, 31 units. We're not anywhere near that. We got the 31, not being disputed at all. We got setbacks being, that are encroaching the sidewalks. And then we start talking about, oh, it's, it's, you know, the trucks and, again, I'm agreeing with you, Alderman Simoni, absolutely. That's where we're going. And then, so that's his target. Cause you're not gonna pass it. You're not saying you're not gonna pass it if that happens. I'm, again, I'm not, and I'm just trying to help us get, end the meeting. However you guys have to do it under Robert's rules, but that's his target. And then he comes back with a, with something that's addressing setback and height.
I bet you.
Got an example as a homeowner, and as a home, all the homeowners here who go through the wringer to do anything. And that's being lost in this conversation right now. So, again, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Again, we're a little bit ahead of the zoning ordinance update. This is what we were told to follow, what the city worked for years on the path, oh, this is just not, this is the downtown master plan. We meet that. What Dan just referred to, the 31 units? You know, I haven't heard anyone in this board or the Plan Commission say, put driveways out onto Stevens or North or Second. I mean, that's what you're talking about. We could try to make a rendering, but tell me the point you want us to make that we're gonna look 200 feet from. Or am I gonna make it from 100 feet, 200 feet, 400 feet in all four directions? I mean, we, we just can't shoot in blind. Give us some direction. I believe everything you've asked, in prior meetings, we've addressed. If you look at the comments today, they're basically all the same ones from before. You know, just with a different view. You know, and we can try to address that. I can try to get a rendering made, cause once it's in the system with the architect, we can print it from a lot of different ways. But what we don't have is real good data for the homes that are south of us, north of us. But I could have the architect work on that. That's, you know, that's something we can try to do and try to accomplish, if that's what you wanna see.
How, how I've done it, pardon me, but how I've done it personally sometimes is, is Photoshop. I'll take a, a rendering and I'll crop out some property and plop, you know, I, I wouldn't want to do that for you because I wouldn't want to misrepresent it if I, if I get height wrong. But, you know, photograph from four blocks away and plop that in there. You know, so you see the context of homes and, I mean, that's.
To the agenda? I can give you one.
Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Cummings.
So as we're talking about perspectives, so tonight and, and at the last meeting, I kept hearing the muse as a reference, as a benchmark, and, and a benchmark is a certain type of perspective. David? Have we got the height on those yet?
We do not have approved plans that I can find, but I did find the approval ordinance for the zoning, and there's no relief granted for the building height. So I'm assuming it's 35 feet or less.
Okay, do we know how many square feet those units are?
The, the unit sizes are actually the, the same. They're both, they're 24 feet wide by 45 feet deep at their greatest, at their greatest dimension. So the, the unit sizes are very comparable.
So it's possible to get the square footage you're looking for with the height they're looking for, and we're not gonna do that? I would have to get rid of the porches. Sorry, I forgot. I forgot. I love when I ask questions that go absolutely nowhere.
Alderman Cummings.
I think we're 90% of the way there. I don't, I don't back away from, although Alderman Simoni is saying this is, I don't think we're in the weeds. I think this is difficult. I think it's frustrating. But I think we're making forward progress, and again, I think we put it off for two weeks.
I agree. Somebody make a motion.
One small point. I did make a good-faith effort at estimating the height of the muse through Photoshop and some standard measures. And I get the ridge line, it's something between 28 and 29 feet, slightly higher with the firewalls.
Between what and what?
Between 28 and 29 feet. Now, that's, that's rough, and the grade is the way we measure it. The height from the garage, it's higher.
We can get a trig person.
Right. You know what? I, I agree with Alderman Cummings, so let's just put it out there.
Can I ask, can I ask a question of Alderman Bruno? What are the setbacks? Okay. It would be interesting to see. Oh, do you have that?
The setbacks at the muse are 20 feet from the, from the property line.
From the sidewalk?
Yeah, from the sidewalk where the property begins.
Sidewalk is on. Okay.
What's that? Yeah.
Sure. Question of how you can communicate, how you can, Colin Campbell again, 18 South Sixth Street. How you can communicate, how you can carry this process forward. Think outside the box for a moment. Would it be possible for the community to appoint a committee of five people and the city, uh, community development to sit down and work out precisely what everybody would be happy with sometime in this following week and present it to the council next week?
If I may, I just, I believe that's what the Plan Commission's role is in, in this process. They're appointed citizens within the city to hear public testimony, make a recommendation to the council.
Has a question been called, Mr. Chairman?
Has, and I have ignored it. But I will be more than willing to listen, and not this time.
I'd like to call the question.
We don't need a second on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Yes.
You've got a motion and a second on item E.
We've got a motion and second on item E, so we're voting on item.
Item E, okay.
I thought we also had a motion to table and a second.
No, nothing was offered.
What did Cummings second before?
Yeah, to table.
I was a second to Bruno or Mark's table?
I did not motion.
Yeah, I thought we, I.
I think the chair should address the motions in the order in which he ignored them.
I did not.
Want me to withdraw my motion?
Okay, then let's backtrack. Let's go, I didn't know that, I didn't know you made a motion to table, I'm sorry.
I, I refined that motion to only table item G.
Yeah, that's what I thought, which we're not on the box.
We're not on that yet.
Not on the table.
So we can call the vote on G and F.
Okay.
Yeah, G.
So now we're gonna.
We're not even on that.
No. We're gonna, on item E, we're taking a vote. Can we do a?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Can we do a roll call vote on this?
Motion on the table is item E, is to consider amending the city's downtown stationary master plan to change the future land use designation for a portion of subject realty from single-family residential to single-family residential attached, draft ordinance related to Oak Creek Capital Partners.
So moved. It's already on.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings? Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Eight to two. Motion carries.
Now, item 4F, consider rezoning, zoning map amendment, the subject realty from the R6, 2, and 3 family residential district to the R7 multiple-family residential district, draft ordinance related to Oak Creek Capital Partners. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, second. Alderman Singer, um, let's do another roll call vote.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to two.
All right. Let's go to G, consider granting a special use for a preliminary slash final planned unit development, draft ordinance related to Creek, Oak Creek Capital Partners. Can I get a motion?
Move to table vote on 4G to, uh, date certain.
We need a motion before you can table it.
We need to get on, we need to get a motion to get this on the table and then, on the floor and then.
So moved.
So moved by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Second by Alderman Singer.
Move to table 4G to date certain of, was it February 23rd? Yes.
Do I have a second for that? Alderman Bruno's first and, to make the motion, and Alderman Cummings second, to a date certain, to table to 2/23. That's the, is that the next council meeting? Okay. Let's do a roll call vote on this.
Chuck Brown?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Tom Simoni?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Motion fails.
So it's back on the table. The tabling is off the table, and the original granting of the special use is back on the table. So, any comments or Alderman Kilburg?
Clarification as to what's all contained within G, because the, the meeting materials that were received, I understand that there was an extraction from G to create H. What did that actually all entail? Can we have clarification on that?
Alderman, Alderman, I'm the city administrator. The Kietrich, well, you can have my job if you want.
Mr. Chairman, Alderman Kilburg, on page 83 of your packet, under letter 1E and 1F, those two items referring to cash contributions to the school district and cash contribution to the park district, those have been sorted out of letter G and put into a separate letter H item.
And that would read as?
It's a cash contribution to the school district in the amount of $20,049.27 and a cash contribution to the park district in the amount of $88,692.70, reflecting a credit for existing residential units on the property related to the Park Place slash Oak Creek Capital Partners project.
And this takes a supermajority?
And this takes a supermajority, not today, but for final vote at city council.
For letter H.
For letter H only.
Correct.
So we're on letter G. Any other questions? Alderman Brown?
May I ask Mr. DeGroot, since F has changed the.
Um, may I ask Mr. DeGroot, since F has changed the underlying zoning from, to R seven, does that affect what is in item G?
Changing the zoning was required to allow for item G.
Okay, so item G was consistent with item F. We have made it by approving item F, we have made item G consistent.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Wanted to check on that.
Any other questions? Let's take a roll call vote on G.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Nay.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Mladra?
It is Geneva's way to talk about these things, so I'm gonna vote nay.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Six to four, motion carries.
Um, now item H. Um, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve a cash contribution to the school district in the amount of-
Second.
Right. Alderman Sino. Alderman, was it?
Bruno.
Alderman Bruno, okay. Any questions?
What does a nay vote or a ye vote indicate then?
That you are in agreement of this contribution.
With, as outlined in the text.
As outlined, the dollar amounts, yes, the twenty thousand and the eighty-eight thousand, which represent the credit. Alderman Cummings?
Um, I have one comment on the land cash. I, I was looking through Illinois U of I Law Library, had a nice piece that came out in nineteen seventy-eight referencing the nineteen seventy-two creation of this land cache. It's a write-up by a guy named James Crowe Jr. It's online, I can send the piece out. An interesting line in here was, "New people met a new need for new parks and schools, which the school system and the park district were hard-pressed to provide." Ordinance seventy-two dash twenty, and that's land cache in the state of Illinois, was the city's attempt to force developers who knew, whose new subdivisions were both a symptom and cause of the population boom to share some of its costs. The idea behind this is the effect that new population has on an existing municipal entity, in particular parks and schools. I think by granting the credit back to the developer, we are absolutely following the intent of the law that was created in nineteen seventy-two, written about later in nineteen seventy-eight, and has been followed since then, and I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
I concur one hundred percent with Alderman Cummings.
Alderman Kilburg?
My only comment to that is, is that, that our ordinance doesn't provide for it, though. And if it provided for it, it would be an easy decision, but because our ordinances aren't current, then, uh, we're making a fairly subjective decision as relates to this. No matter what has been written about it outside of Geneva, this applies to Geneva, this is really our decision as a council, and, uh, I feel that we've had a good working relationship with our park and school districts in the past, I want to preserve it in the future.
Thank you.
I'll wait till the remainder of the day says anything to say.
I've got something to say, but it's gonna take a while.
Yeah. I'll just relax and sit back.
All right.
I was just gonna ask, I've, you know, I've heard that a few times, I've heard both sides of it, so definitively, does our ordinance allow this or not?
According to the city attorney, yes.
Good enough. Thank you.
Okay. This issue has been a thorn in my side, and I'm gonna, you're gonna hear me out.
Cause he's got the gavel.
Cause I got the gavel.
Glasses.
Uh, just to give an overview, because I, I have become privileged to this only in a short period of time, so I was unaware of this whole land cache scenario myself until I was educated and educated myself on it. But to give everybody an overview, this particular ordinance in Geneva was enacted in nineteen seventy-five, that makes this ordinance forty years old. The intent of the ordinance was to provide funds for both the school and park districts to be able to accommodate the impact of new development on both the schools and parks, since new develop, new development would contribute to the districts, uh, would not contribute to the districts until completed and taxes were paid. The funds were to be used for, one, purchase of land and/or build new facilities and/or upgrade current facilities to accommodate the impact of new students to the schools and/or citizens to the parks. Last year, the law has provided for the school district to use the funds to provide certain technologies as well. Up until a couple of recent development projects in the city of Geneva that we're currently entertaining and reviewing, um, all the projects were new developments, they were not annexation, or they were not redevelopments, so this never became an issue. Up until this new development, the city of Geneva directed developers to the work, to work directly with the school districts and park districts to come up with a mutually agreeable development fee or impact fee, in which the developer would be responsible to pay each of the districts based upon the agreed-upon development that the city of Geneva approved. Now comes a few new projects, Shodin's, Seven Town Homes on Seventh Street, Park Place, which we're considering discussing tonight, the Marquette Project at the C-tron location, and I'm sure there'll be many others. Those are not new developments, but are actually redevelopments of existing land, which has homes and/or buildings on that land that are currently paying real estate taxes, of which both the school district and the park district currently and for many, many years have been the benefactor of. City of Geneva has encouraged, fostered, partnered, and till now have not been involved in the impact fee of new, new development. Even though as the city's ordinance and we receive zero direct benefit, we absorb all liability and costs associated with the ordinance. The city and developer proposes that there should be a credit to this impact fee against those properties that are currently on that land paying taxes. The city and developer feel this is a fair resolution and compromise for all parties. Credits like these for existing homes for redevelopment is not uncommon with many other communities. So let's take a look at Park Place as the example. Here are the facts. There are currently nine dwellings currently on the block where Park Place is proposing their redevelopment. There are two point two one four students generated by the existing nine dwellings, based on the city's adopted student multiplier. This number would increase by four point five students to a total of six point seven students by the proposed Park Place development. There are sixteen point five people in total household populations on the existing nine dwellings, again, based on the city adopted, the city's adopted population multiplier. This number would increase to forty-seven people for a total of sixty-four and a half people by the proposed development. Total tax is currently being paid by the nine dwellings is forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, of which thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty-seven go to the school district and twenty-four hundred and twenty-nine go to the park district. The developer is requesting the following, to pay an impact fee to the school district of a little over twenty thousand dollars after a twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand two hundred dollar credit for the nine existing dwellings that, that are paying taxes, to pay an impact fee to the park district of eighty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars after a thirty thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollar credit for the nine existing dwellings that are paying taxes. After the development is completed, the thirty-one unit townhomes will generate four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in annual taxes, of which two hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred and seventy-four is to be allocated to the school districts and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six allocated to the park district. So my simple math calculations for the next ten years, assuming taxes don't go up at all, this is where I raise the everybody laugh sign, the school district will receive two point nine six four million dollars for a twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollar credit. This does not include the initial twenty thousand forty-nine dollars the developer is paying to the school district. This is for an increase of four point five five six students to the school district. The park district will receive two hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for a thirty thousand dollar credit. This does not include the initial eighty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars the developer will be paying to the park district. This is an increase of forty-seven, uh, this is for an increase of forty-seven point nine residents. This has nothing to do with anything but being fair to everybody involved, in my opinion. I learned that in my opinion part from my lawyers. Will the developer move forward with the project if he does not get the credits? Probably, but is it the right thing to do? Is it fair to the developer? What about that person buying that townhome? Is it fair to them to pass the double-dipping cost onto them because an existing unit is already paying taxes and now they're gonna be charged extra as well for an impact fee? What about the citizens of Geneva? Is it fair to them to risk future development, taxes, revenues, et cetera, by driving developers to other communities that offer these types of credits for redevelopment? I think the school and park district should look long and hard and stop stepping over a dollar to pick up a dime and look at the big picture instead of the small picture. In the last meeting, Mr. Grasso said that the twelve thousand that we're crediting would provide a whole classroom full of computers. Well, I wanna know how big the smallest classroom is in the school district and how twelve thousand dollars is filling that schoolroom up with computers. Also said, he also mentioned precedent of future developments, it will also set a precedent for future developments in Geneva. I can only hope so, because this would be a great opportunity for Geneva. He also said, "We're shortchanging the homeowners who have paid taxes." How in the world is a twelve thousand dollar credit that is gonna generate over three million dollars in the next ten years with, assuming no tax increases, shortchanging the homeowners who have paid taxes in the city of Geneva? So my recommendation for this, which I guess you can probably all figure out, is that it's unfair to not give credits on existing dwellings that are already paying taxes, especially when the big picture is the city and the school district and park district generate a tremendous amount of future revenue as a result of these efforts, and to push developers and push opportunity out to our community, to our neighboring communities is a huge mistake. So, I am in favor of H. Thank you. Alderman Kilburg?
Uh, I'm gonna revert back to reading the ordinance then, and I, I'm of the belief that governments should be of laws rather than of manner and interpretation, and if you look at the portion that's been referenced as it relates to this, "The cash contribution in lieu of park and recreation land or school land shall be paid to the city, which shall then pay such contributions over to the park district and the school district. Such contributions shall be held in trust by the park district and the school district solely for the acquisition and improvements of land which will be available to serve the immediate or future needs of the residents of that subdivision. B, capital site improvements or other existing park and recreation land or land, school land, which shall serve such needs, I, uh, e.g., landscape, baseball fields, soccer fields, and the like. C, or other capital improvements when authorized by an annexation agreement, including but not limited to the construction of additions to existing facilities." This was what was given to me as the criteria for awarding of the credits, and I don't see anything in there that, that would, would define it as such.
David can point to that section.
This was, this was what Mr. Unch outlined to me in our meeting as the, the criteria for the credit.
There is, are you, can you tell me what section you're at?
I'm on page nine eighteen.
The ordinance section, I believe it's twelve dash four dash five.
Four dash five.
The first paragraph, the last sentence speaks to alternative contributions and the requirement for super majority vote.
Last sentence of the first paragraph?
Correct.
"In the event that the park district or the school district has advised the city that a park or school site is necessary, or a cash contribution is necessary, a two-thirds vote of the aldermen of the city holding office shall be required before an alternative contribution is accepted."
Right, it doesn't speak specifically to credits, but it speaks to the city council being able to consider an alternative contribution to what's generated by the tables in the ordinance.
That seems to be a stretch to me, but, Sylvia.
Well, I'm, I'm going by, um, city council, I mean, our lawyers would say, in their opinion, it is, it is that, but-
But I think, did we, I guess I would be interested in what the park district and the school district's lawyers might interpret it as.
Well, it's-
It might be different than the city's attorney.
And I, I, I don't, I don't disagree, and that's a, that's above my pay grade, and I-
Mine too.
So, all I'm saying is that if there is a, in my opinion, if there is a, uh, if there's an opportunity, I think it's a, for me, it's a fairness issue more than anything else, and a fairness to everybody involved, from the citizens, to the districts, to the developer, and that's just, in my opinion, and like I said, it's a fairness issue. Alderman Bruno?
Uh, yeah, I think everyone's in agreement that there's some ambiguity, uh, but, in the ordinance, and we're, I understand we're looking at that to, to reword that, maybe work with multipliers.
To clarify.
To clarify the sort of thing, but I think it comes back down to the intent, the additional impact. Ostensibly, a house that's been there a hundred years is built into the, into funding the parks and schools. No, no, no aspersions against the parks, no aspersions against the schools, love them both, use them both. But, you know, if I've learned anything in, uh, in roles, Alderman, it's, it's being equitable. Everyone's gotta be treated the same, and the intent is that it is the additional impact of development, and a credit just seems fair and equitable.
I wanna speak to the comments that we've been talking about in regard to fairness, and I think that it's extremely unfair to associate what tax revenue will be generated by this development in relation to the land cash ordinance, because despite what happens with this new development, the school and the park district will receive all of that funding based on our tax codes and our real estate tax codes. And so to associate those large dollar amounts with the land cash contribution gives a false sense of what we're asking for and why.
So, uh, the intent of the fairness and the credit, in my opinion, is to encourage development and not discourage it, to push it to our neighboring communities that are offering it. So, anyhow, that said, we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Can I have a, how many, does this just go forward with a simple majority, or does this need the super majority tonight?
As a recommendation, I'm sorry.
No, no, bye.
Because it's a recommendation, it could be a simple majority tonight. Next week, for a formal vote, it needs a two-thirds.
Okay, thank you.
Did our illustrious mayor have something to say?
No, not at all. He's truly illustrious.
Thought he was talking about someone else.
All right.
Thank you, Don, for talking.
Okay, Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Okay, we are now at new business. Anyone have any new business? Um, upcoming meeting, oops, yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, um, point out, we actually have two of our student government students here tonight. I had suggested this would be a, a good meeting to learn. I had suggested that this would be a good meeting for them to see government in action and public participation, and I think you all held, held me to a good meeting as anticipated.
Go into private sector, quick.
Okay, uh-
Motion to adjourn. Any other new business?
Oh, yes, hold on.
I think it is worth noting, and the chairman and I spoke about this earlier, as did, um, Mrs. Dawkins, next Tuesday evening, February seventeenth, there's a special committee of the whole meeting regarding the Route Thirty-One Road Diet, and then, depending on that vote, at the regularly scheduled council meeting, we will consider that matter as well. So I misspoke last week at the public hearing, that matter will be considered in one evening. So, and I'll send a note out to the president about this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the upcoming meetings, regular committee of the whole, uh, next meeting will be February 23rd at 7:00 PM. Next week's meeting is on Tuesday, 17th, because of...
Presidents.
Presidents' Day.
A motion need a second.
And I want to thank everybody for tolerance and coming and appreciate it. Uh, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alderman Marks, seconded in by Alderman Bruno, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all.